Good morning and welcome to the Pauline County Board of Commissioners, April 26, 2016 work session. Welcome all of our guests and elected officials. Looking around the room, I see Mayor of Hiram, Teresa Phil, y'all. Am I missing any other elected officials? Thank you all for being here. We've got an extra full room this morning. So, we have the student of the day. And my student is Kaylee Gates. She's looking to go into the healthcare industry. Sadly, she's looking at Clemson. She's already been accepted to Ole Miss and she has some other shoes she's looking at, but her choice is Clemson, sadly enough.
Chairman, I want to enter, he's my young lady student.
Okay, if you have a student with you today working, let's do that right now. So would you...
They really trusted me, Chairman, they got me free.
There's a lot going on in Hiram, y'all officially catch it.
I have Margot, she's from South Polley. I have Tali from Hiram. And then I have Ashley from East Polley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God, I think you got somebody to blame the potholes on.
Justin Sazhar is from Polley County. He lives in New Hope. He's a junior and he's got another year to decide what he's doing. And he's helping me with selecting roast papers.
Should get a lot of cash. I'm sure he'll be offered lunch by the end of the day. Kaylee, by the way, is in the MAGN program at Pauline County High School, so good day for her. Does anybody else have a student? Yes, sir.
This is Skyler, she's a senior from Polley. She is also working in another field, but she, if you choose life, she is for M G A.
Any other students? Anybody else with a student? Well, I hope you have a wonderful day and find out a little bit about some of the things we do. Thank y'all for coming in here today. Marc, will you bring this out? Our invocation and pledge this morning will be brought by Pastor Thomas Dixon Jr., Will Mount Sinai Baptist Church. Would you stand with me if you're ready?
Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. Father, please forgive us for our sins and shortcomings today and thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Father, I pray that your divine favor will follow upon this meeting today and on each commissioner that is present. Bless them with your wisdom, your knowledge, and your power as they make decisions for this county. Lord, bless everyone that is present here today and bless Pauline County because we know that all power rests in your hands alone. May your presence always reside with his board of commissioners and may your presence always reside with Pauline County. Father, thank you for this day, for this hour, for this moment. Please watch over us and keep us until we see each other again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'll remind everybody to turn off yourselves on mute. I'm not sure anybody cares. And any devices that might make a noise, so, thank you. Minutes of April 12, 2016 work session minutes and the April 12, 2016 board meeting minutes are available for your review. I've asked De Drew fellows to come and give us an update on the elections. De Drew, if you come up to the podium, this is your last day to register to vote in the elections.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to just take a minute. David has already said that today is the last day to register to vote if we're going to vote in the nation for the primary. We have had a lot of people registering to vote. Our numbers are hitting right at nine and four thousand now, so I'm very excited. I'm also very excited to say that Monday, we start early voting here in the courthouse. A very exciting time. Please, I'm trying to push as much as I can for people to get out and early vote. May 24th is the primary election day and it is also a day that school is in session. So it's going to be crazy out in the polling locations. I'm asking for patience because we are very limited on parking at our school systems, especially with it being the last week of school. I did want to say this, it's going to take you a little bit longer to vote this time. The ballot is a very large ballot. The slot is on there, there's some, there's a Republican question. It's just a big ballot, a Democratic ballot, it has at least four Democratic questions on there, the slots, we have all of our nonpartisan judges. So it's going to probably take you ten to fifteen minutes when you step into the voting booth. Standing in line, there's, there will be lines, there's a lot of passion in this election and I'm excited about that. So just, just be mindful of that. If you can come vote early, please do. We will do everything we can to make it a pleasant experience. Just, just try to get out and vote. That's the most important thing, is that you go and you catch your votes. We'll be voting early up until May the 20th and then of course the big dates, the 24th, like I said. But if you can, encourage people to vote early. We will open our satellite locations beginning May the 16th at Burn Creek Park, Mount Taber Park, and Poplar Springs Baptist Church. And that week, we also extend our hours every night until 6:00 PM. We also will be having Saturday voting on May the 14th, so just get out and vote. That's the most important thing you can do and encourage others to do that. Put it on your Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter, whatever your own. Just tell people to get out and vote, we're going to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a little celebration today. It is Tony Crow's birthday. Let's say happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tony. Happy birthday to you.
It's my birthday. The board of commissioners would like to present the Water Professionals Appreciation Day proclamation to the Pauline County Water System Director. Would you, Frank, you want to bring some people forward, I think?
Yes. And they're going to be reluctant to do it probably, but...
I could pay.
I think someone's going to be talking about terrorists.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, I'm above this, thanks.
I'll sit back, I'll make some of this sound. Paul was in the back. Short guys up front, Paul was in the back. Make them take a roll here. Come on in, guys. Put on that white, that's pretty. I can love each other. All right. Water Professionals Appreciation Day, whereas the Georgia Water Quality Control Act was passed by the Georgia General Assembly and signed into law in 1964 by Governor Carl Sanders. And whereas at the time of passage to the act, many of our Georgia's surface waters were extremely polluted and serious water quality problems existed all over the state of Georgia. And whereas the state established the Georgia Water Quality Control Board, later reconstituted as the Georgia Environmental Protection Division as a result of 1972 reorganization of state government under Jimmy Carter. And Governor Sanders appointed R.S. Rock Howard to be the board's executive secretary. Whereas over the ensuing four decades, billions of federal, state, and local dollars have been invested in planning, designing, and constructing modern public home water wastewater treatment facilities throughout the state. Georgia Water Professionals are committed to operating these facilities to maintain consistent compliance with extremely stringent standards. Whereas the quality of Georgia waters has improved dramatically throughout the state over the fifty years since the original passage of the Georgia Water Control, Quality Control Act, and huge strides have been made over the past several decades in providing safe and reliable water as a tap throughout the state. And whereas the success that has been experienced thus far and the success we will have in the future is made possible by tremendous dedication and efforts of Georgia Water Professionals. Water Professionals provide critical service that are most often taken for granted, but are essential to virtually everything we do. Now therefore being resolved that, I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauline Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Monday, May the 2nd, 2016, Water Professionals Appreciation Day in Pauline County and recognize the men and women who work tirelessly in our county to ensure that our tap water is safe and our water resources are protected and properly managed. Specifically, we want to recognize and thank the staff and management of the Pauline Water System, Department of Community Development Division, and Department of Transportation Storm Water. Now what I'd like for you to do, let's start on the right-hand side of the room up here and state your name and what division you work for.
Derek Baxter.
Loud.
Derek Baxter, Pauline County DOT for Construction.
Joshua Smith, Pauline County DOT, Senior Construction Inspector.
Mark Long, Community Development.
I'm Corey Coates with Pauline County Water System Engineering.
Daryl Vaughn, Pauline County Water System.
Mike Kinsley, Operations Manager for Water System.
I'm Kathy Stahler with Pauline County DOT, I help out with stormwater.
John Babel, Superintendent of Comp Plan Wastewater Treatment.
Art Tyler, Plan Operator, Comp Plan.
I'm Russell Kelly, I'm the Wastewater Division Manager, so I'm with all the plans.
Lori Ashmore, Director of Pauline Water System.
Randy Baldwin, Sewer Director, Maintenance Board.
I'm Greg Perrow, I operate the upper suite water plant.
Harlan Cook, I have a laboratory analyst for sewer system.
Rick McCarty, Pauline County DOT, Construction Project Manager.
Tim, you, laboratory manager, environmental coordinator for Water System.
Eric Erbly, Lab Assistant Analyst for Pauline County Water System.
Paul Hardy, I'm working with the Pauline County Water and Sewer, I'm an intern at CTC, Tech and Tech.
Lori, you want anything you'd like to say before? Okay, if y'all stay here, then there goes the podium for a moment.
Generally, the essential business of water is taken for granted as American citizens go about their daily lives. When we turn on the faucet, safe drinking water flows from it. And it's on demand. When we finish using the water, it flows away from our homes and businesses into the sewer and we take for granted that it's clean before being discharged back into the natural environment. We assume that the measures are in place to prevent contamination to storm water as it enters our waterways. The water professionals in front of you today represent twenty-eight dedicated water professionals at Pauline County who hold thirty-nine licenses and certifications. Today, Pauline County faces the challenges of not only our new water supply program, but increasingly stringent regulations and an industry-wide shortage of water professionals as baby boomers retire. We must promote career paths for our young people and provide a competitive compensation package to attract and retain qualified water professionals here in Pauline County. I'm proud to announce that this summer Pauline Water System Wick has an intern who is pursuing his environmental technology degree at Chattanooga Tech. Paul Hardy will be interning with this, with us this summer with a goal to complete his degree program in December and we welcome him into the water industry.
Thank you.
I'm actually, I can't see twice. I have a case to see that.
I haven't taken a seat yet. I think I'm thirty-two. Keep the water running. Oh yeah, you gotta go back to work. Award to Sergeant Mike Lewis, Pauline County Fire Department Chief. I think you have some things to say and if you'll go forward and bring your family with you, I think you have some family members. Right up here, ladies and fire squad. You don't get out of this. Come on up, everybody. Let's get y'all over on this side. Chief, I think you have some good things to say.
Yes, I do, yes I do. We're proud to introduce Sergeant Mike Lewis as our selection for the Public Safety Appreciation Award. Sergeant Lewis began his career with Pauline County Fire Department in 1998. He was already dedicated to the county by serving as a volunteer firefighter and obtaining his EMT in 1996. In the twenty years since, he has committed selfless time and energy towards not only gaining continued education in EMS field, but also sharing his knowledge with countless citizens, firefighters, or peers of both Region One and Region Four EMS. Sergeant Lewis obtained his National Registry Paramedic in 2012 and he has sought to share his new knowledge with others. He was recently nominated by the Region One State EMS Special Achievement Award. This is a distinguished award and only rewarded based on strict criteria. Two thousand and fifteen, in the past few months, have been very productive for Sergeant Lewis. On top of his career duties as a company officer, he has taught several basic life support classes to his community, including the Department of Family and Children's Services in April and October, and the Public Safety Explorers in September. He taught advanced cardiac life support and pre-hospital trauma life support to several entities across Northwest Georgia last fall and finished out the year coordinating and teaching emergency pediatric care in Pauline County. He was tasked with being the department's liaison for the physical therapy solution and sought to gain a better working relationship between the county and school districts, sports medicine, and medicine specialists. Sergeant Lewis has also committed a bonus of time and energy in establishing, coordinating, and mentor program for all graduating fire recruits in our department. The six-month program sharpens skills of recruits gaining in rookie school, but also presents detailed modules of instruction based on what a new firefighter will encounter in the station and on emergency scenes. The program will be used again in our upcoming rookie classes. Sergeant Lewis is a great asset to the Pauline County Fire Department, but through his dedication of teaching, he's also established himself as a very competent leader and communicator in the entire Northwest Georgia region. Knowing Sergeant Lewis's character, we see no signs that he's slowing down. Mike, you're very deserving of this award, but appreciate everything he's done for Pauline County and for all the citizens.
You have to do your family to this.
This is Lisa Collins with a chance to work for Ambulatory EMS also. I'm momma, my dad, Victor and Shirley Lewis.
I know you're proud. Let's get a picture. Thank you, I'm going to make y'all look pretty. Today we have invited yes, Robert Gray, Robert with Strategic Planning Group Incorporated, SPG. It's about economic development study and comprehensive plan. Thank you for being here.
I appreciate being here. Just a quick little overview, as you know, we were retained by you all to do your economic development program and we're also using this opportunity to also coordinate with your comp plan process. In fact, we had a very good series of meetings yesterday, but just as an introduction, we've been doing economic development now for over three decades, our specialties economic development as well as market research, financial feasibility, and site selection. We're very, very proud, I can't see all that, but that's just some of the effort we've done. In yellow, you'll see Jones Creek, that just was approved in January. We're very proud of that study and hopefully we'll have the same successes as we did there and here. You have a very, very beautiful community. I want to stress that one thing, economic development today is very, very different than it used to be. It's not just office and industrial development as it has been in the past. It's retail, it's medical, it's incubation, it's gardening, it's redevelopment. It's very holistic in terms, and the purpose behind it basically is quality of life, employment. If you look at that fourth one, that's the center of most communities. It's basically revenue enhancement. We basically do your comp planning of the quality of service standards in terms of things that are basic, your community desires. Economic development fits in very importantly in terms of helping you enhance your revenue stream to help pay for those types of services. And again, it's very, very different today as we get into it. For those of you who are not involved in site selection process, it's very heavily data-driven now. Economic development from the other side of the equation, from the industrial side, is very negative because what it is, they have hundreds and thousands of sites they potentially have been moved into. So what the first step is, is are you even in the ballgame? Because the first thing I do as a site selector is toss out communities. It's basically, you want to get it down to five or ten. So the first part of it is very, very negative for communities and we want to make sure that information, that profile, that I'll talk about in one second, gets you into the game as we can proceed through. As I mentioned earlier, it's very broad. It includes tourism, and you have a cultural heritage. I was here, you have a brand new, in terms of expanding health process. I spent yesterday traveling near your community. You have a lot of assets and I was very, very impressed with what I saw. I suppose the one thing you're missing is a lot of available shovel-ready sites and available buildings. We're going to work on that one. But again, it's revenue enhancement, it's partnerships, very critically, it's marketing, it's complex. And the bottom line, it is very, very competitive on each one. I wanted to show you this basically for a lot of reasons because this is sort of a different way of snapshotting your community. If you can't read that, up to the right, you'll see an arrow going outside of that circle. It has basically fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six people. Those are your citizens who live here but actually leave the county to work elsewhere. On the far left, if you'll sit there and look at that darker green site, there's thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine. Those are people that don't live here but work here. So they come on in and that little number of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six are people that actually have been to work here. So that basically is where we are starting from and that's the latest date, that was just released a month ago. It's 2014, so it does not include the hospital expansion, so that's basically all for those types of numbers. I thought it'd be fun to look at this one, it's very complicated. When you see that little gold mark, that's you. That outline of your county, that is where your residents work. Guess what? They're all to the, I guess, east of you in terms of that process. This is the other side of the coin, where our workers that are coming here, living. Again, spread all over the process. You have a very positive labor pool. The reason that's important in economic development, a lot of communities will sit there and say, well, what is our skill label within our boundary line? Economic development does not respect city or county boundaries. It's market-driven. And what that says basically is you are as competitive as anyplace else, is you're drawing upon that big labor pool and you have a phenomenal labor pool that's leaving, that fifty-six thousand that are leaving are predominantly highly skilled. And again, this is showing the quadrants where they are leading to. Our goal, needless to say, is to capture those that are coming in to live here and hopefully a significant portion of those that are leaving every day to come back here and to work. So that's our goal as we move forward. Our program is really a series of programs. You have to basically come in and do your community assessment. You want to find out how competitive you are locally as well as regionally and look at some of the hard numbers. That will create a profile of who you are. We're also in the process of right now, starting off your strange weakness of community and threat study. And that gives us an idea of really where the opportunities and the gaps are, where your targeted issues are, and that's your community analysis. And then that will lead us then to the economic development plan. And the economic development plan will be coordinated with your comp plan so that at the end of the day, they both will mesh in the process. And that's it. Look forward to meeting you throughout the process and we'll be interviewing you individually. We wanted to start that process because you are the elected persons and you're also in your county, so as a respect, we want to start with you all, and that will be started right after the screening. Thank you very much and we look forward to meeting you.
Thank you, great presentation, thank you. Been awards, there's none. Reports from committees and departments. Dave Munford has a new story of the nine-one-one operation.
Good morning. Just briefly, several weeks ago, Channel 11 had served several agencies in metro Atlanta with an open record request on call answer pines and call hold guns to kind of compare and see where we all met with the national standards. And I think they polled six or eight agencies in metro Atlanta, Pauline County being one of those. And out of the agencies that were polled, only three of us met the national call standard type. And we were in those three, so it will be Pauline County, Clayton County, and Fulton County. The national standard is to answer the telephone in nine-one-one incoming emergency line in under ten seconds, ninety percent of the time, and then under twenty seconds, ninety-five percent of the time. And that's just a difficult standard to meet when you're busy, but I think Clayton County came down on top of the list and we were there with Fulton and Clayton. We're very, very pleased to hear that. Usually when the news... Usually when the news comes out and we ask us for open records, it doesn't turn out that good. Or 911 in general. But we were glad that happened. When I first came to work here, one of the promises that I made to the commission was that we were going to rewrite our policies to bring us in line with national standards. And if we didn't have a national standard that met, and we felt like there needed to be a standard, then we would create a local standard. And so we've been continually doing that over the years. Next year, hopefully, we intend to apply for accreditation, national accreditation, so we'll become one of the few 911 centers in the board that actually have a national accreditation from a public safety communications accreditation agency. And I would say that as much as the commissioners applaud me for my work, I'm not one of the answer the phones. I may write the standard, but the folks that answer the phones every day, they're the ones that actually made this happen. We recognized them a couple of weeks ago, and their hard work is the reason we need those standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave serves on state committees, and he has been asked several times to be in the legislature for 911 buildings, but has helped us move forward with cell phones to carry a fee. And in the past, we've never received that fee, and both his hard work and others around the state, we now collect that to pay for 911. And I believe you're self-serving. You find most of your stuff except for squash.
With the exception of squash money, we haven't taken any American general funds in the last eight years.
Last eight years. So that's key, that he's gone out and found the money to be successful.
It's increasingly difficult sometimes, and our technology is part of the problem. We have to have it. One thing that since you're speaking of money, at the end of the last legislative session, we found out yesterday, there was a last-minute bill that was introduced, and the state legislature is looking to impose a 5% sales tax on fireworks. And out of that 5% sales tax, 5% of the 5% is going to go back to local 911 centers for operations of those, of the local 911 centers. The rest will go to fire departments and EMS. And that was a bill that was introduced at the end of legislative sessions. I believe that that's going to actually be on the ballot sometime in the future, so just keep that in mind if you see it there. I think it has to be voted on by the state.
Thank you, Dave. So I would like to have Commissioner Ron Davis, he wanted to talk about policy of usually county email and employee participation with political campaigns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two separate issues here, but the first one I'd like to tackle is the employee participation with political campaigns. There's been some confusion in the county, and I wanted to just bring it forward for discussion, and there's no vote needed for this, but the employee handbook under political activity has a sentence in there, "Employees shall not publicly support, endorse, or work for the election of any person running for a Paulding County elected position." Now, the confusion has been among employees and supervisors that over what is a Paulding County elected position? My understanding is that would be any elected position that qualifies with DTRA, in the elections office, coroner, chairman, commissioner, school board, those positions, and that anyone that qualifies elsewhere, like down at the Capitol, would not be so state representative, Congress, Senate, that sort of thing. Is that, is that the general, is that, am I interpreting that right? The reason I bring it up is the penalty for violating the offense's determination. And so you can appreciate employees being careful about that. And so I didn't think that we wanted any confusion, and I thought it might be good to bring it out and just have a discussion over what's the interpretation of that.
Has been kind of standing.
It's been there as long as I recall. I believe it predates, when I started in 1997, it predates that. It's mine, if any of what he's saying is correct, both offices, I mean.
Yeah, so to clar- So to clarify, which is exactly what we've read, if you qualify for an elected position and you go right here to this building to do that, to the elections office to qualify, that's what we're going to consider, and that's what we've been considering, Paulding County election. If you go down to the state to qualify, we're not considering that, even though you may have somebody qualified in the state that represents a portion or all of Paulding County. For example... Stay around. That's the way out, Brad, and I just want to make sure we're good on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ron.
The second issue here is regarding email use, and I didn't know how to describe this for the agenda today. I got an email on Saturday that disturbed me. Mr. Chairman, it's from you. It was a response to Ms. Ashmore, who had sent an email about an issue with a citizen that was in Post 1, and she had sent it to me and you, and copied some of her employees. Mrs. Cooper was on it. And your response to that email was an insult to that citizen. It's inappropriate for any person on this board to say things like that to or about a citizen. It sends the wrong message to our department heads that that sort of behavior is okay. It sends the wrong message to the employees that says that behavior is okay. When I announced I was going to run for this position back in August, you called me and asked me to come in and talk to you. And one of the things we talked about was, you said you wanted, you hoped that once you were gone, that tensions would settle and things would calm down a little bit. If you remember, I told you that we had the opportunity to go ahead and start that early. And we need to stop in what we've been doing. And the citizen is actually here today, and I would ask that you make a call.
Mr. Cooper, I'd like to say from the bottom of my heart, I'm sorry to the Cooper man.
For what? I don't know what.
I made an inappropriate comment, and I'm sorry.
What was it? I don't know what these are. I have no clue.
I'll meet with you after the meeting. Mr. Austin's going to meet with you after the meeting. He's apologizing in the meeting now. He's going to meet with you afterward. Public participation on agenda items. We had consent agenda discussed, six consent agenda items. Number one, approve the acceptance of the Paulding Street for perpetual maintenance. This is coming from Ann. This is Rosewood Park, pages three and four, it's in post four, Garland Road Lane, Royal Sunset Drive, Mary Wallace Way, Cornea Court. Number two, authorize the chairman to enter to a graystone power for easement. Laura, do you want to tell us about that?
This is associated with our Backland Road facility. We currently have an overhead power line that's running through the middle of that property, and the easement will get graced up and be able to vary that along the back property line.
Approved the job description for the sheriff's office. Lieutenant Colonel Chadson, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
The position that we're asking to change the job description and the pay grade is our GCIC supervisors. Currently, that position is a pay grade 10, and I'm asking to change it to a pay grade 14. Over the years, this came to my attention several weeks ago, but over the years, that division has grown within the sheriff's office. And the supervisor who's now holding that position, she's responsible, she has eight staff members that work for her. It's a 24/7 position within the sheriff's office. And she has a lot of responsibility. She's responsible for all of our GCIC, security integrity, for all our deputies and staff that have to be, that'd be retested every two years and evaluated. And there's a lot of other things that take place with that, dealing with DPOs on the registry, our sex offender registry. So there's a lot of responsibility for that supervisor in that position, and we're just asking to change it to a pay grade 14.
Any questions?
At this time, how many employees would you rate?
It'll be one, I guess. Just recently, just kind of give you the background on it, Ms. Olivia Shedd, she retired from that position. And when the sheriff appointed our next supervisor in that position, I went through the payroll change, and that's when I noticed that it was a pay grade 10. And I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was right for the amount of work that's going on there.
Thank you. I guess. Number four, I believe these are-
Thank you.
Next, we're all in post one. Appoint Jeremiah Hills to the border and sewer advisory board with a term ending 12/31/16. Appoint Chris Wheeler to the planning zoning commission with a term ending 12/21/2016.
Is that, excuse me, is that a typo on the date for the woman?
Yes, it should be 12.
The 31st?
And number six, appoint Jessica Phillips to them control hearing boards with a term ending 12/31/2016. These are all one-year, and they're fully unexpired terms, so I guess you may or may not be-
There was no Post 1 commissioner in January when appointments to the boards were made, and so I've been working to get some answers for those boards.
But that's why this is such a short term, Ron.
Correct.
For us. Would you like to move any of these to regular section? No old business under new business, discuss actions to adopt resolution 1690, prompting an amendment, Article 1, Board of Commissioners, Section 10. Chairperson of the Local Act of Georgia General Assembly, Dr. Paulding County, clarify the types of purchases the chairperson may make without permission of approval under the purchase of over 10,000, and report to the Comptroller of the Board of Commissioners, final reading and adoption.
This is the, as it says, this is the final reading and the final adoption for this particular ordinance under the way that this needs to be done as an amendment to the local act. You have to adopt it twice after having started the process, advertised it, and then have two adoptions. They adopted it last meeting, this is the last meeting, that you would need to adopt it at and become effective if you adopt it this evening.
So we can adopt it as if you can, at the same time?
Right. It would be, it would be up to be adopted for the final time and then be effective this evening.
Okay. Number two, discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign and submit amended restarted ballot, 457B and 401A, term of plan documents for regular points. Brian Eckhart, you're the researcher.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ron.
This is a fairly routine item. Periodically, the IRS makes revisions and have to restate plan documents. One of the most important things there, Ron, is that this does not affect the things that are most essential to our plan in terms of who qualifies, who missed made the plan, who is, what the matches are, what the service requirements are, investing requirements, things of that nature. Add it in your backup material and get some items. I'll talk about these, and then Mr. Colet, I'd like to discuss them. Pension Protection Act, some regulations under Section 415, the Heart Act, or the Retired Employee Recovery Act, the Small Town Act. Basically, these are some formalities that take into account anything from required minimum distribution, if you're a retirement age, to what, how you define compensation, what you do in various cases with military folks that may be deployed, things of that nature. So we're just epitifying all this into our plan document, and we have a routine audit that's done every few years, so if you have any specific questions, we'll try to answer.
Thank you very much. Do you have a question?
I don't know.
Number three.
Depressive.
Number three, discuss action to hire Online Information Services Incorporated Collection Agency for the Paulding County Water Sewer System. We have Tabitha and Lee Corr, your names here also.
That's right. We're going to both touch this on, because it can be a little bit of one reminder to you than maybe it should be. But on April the 11th, we receive proposals for a collection service. As you know, this has been a discussion for quite some time now. We have, we brought off an average of about $100,000 a year worth of water. The water system downstairs, they collect as they can. Unfortunately, sometimes we have residents move, and they leave us with an outstanding bill of maybe two a month, maybe two, as much as they can get before they're actually disconnected. When they ask reestablished service, we do some research to try to see if they have an outstanding bill, so that we're able to collect that at the time. However, we're still some, maybe Little County, Gorton area that doesn't have water service for whatever reason. Our accounts that are 61 days or more for one point are continuing to grow. So we're asking that we use online services. We had four participants in this, that submitted proposals. None of them are state of Georgia businesses. They were all over the United States. And we're asking that we award this to Online Collection Services. It is a North Carolina-based company, and we will send them our outstanding debt over 120 days, over 90 days, until we get it down to around 20 to 60, 90 day mark, where it appears that we can't collect. And they will go out and do a research on where that person might be to try to collect. So if they requested power service or a service in the Mayfairing County, then they will be able to locate them, or we don't have the ability to do that at this time. They're going to, the fee is 15% for what they collect, so we're going to continue our collection services. We're just going to send for the amounts that they obviously are not going to be able to collect. And hopefully, we'll reduce that approximate $100,000 write-off angle to something a lot less than that.
This came to us as a recommendation from the border and sewer advisory board. Anything else where you want to add to that? Stay up there, let me ask a question.
The only thing I would like to add is we're taking steps this week to do a realignment of our customer service that we dedicate someone to the interface and looking at validating all of the account information we have and the amounts prior to sending it off to, for collection, for outside collections. We'll be working at writing off some of what we carry, we carry within our billing software that has already been out, reduced by, written off by finance. But we'll be making that, making that change in terms of that process.
Did you all co-coordinate to kind of match this up here? Do you all have any questions, Laura?
I have two questions. Tabitha, do we pay them anything in addition to the 15% commission on what they collect?
No, sir. They did not ask for anything in their proposal. It's just 15% of what they collect.
The memo you sent, second, the memo you sent said that unless legal action is necessary to collect, what is the cost there? How does that work?
I think it's 35%. I believe it's 30%.
And there are, there are thresholds, it's a significant, it's a significant debt before, when you even...
Right, and that's, that's a commission paid on money that we wouldn't have issued at all.
That's correct.
For my clarification, if someone moves out of county, doesn't pay the final bill, all this does is track them down and gives you the information where they are. There's no coordination with other water departments to help collect, right?
There's no coordination between departments. The collections would be strictly done by online. They just use the records that they have access to with other utilities, and they do a great deal of work in the, with the electric utilities, so have access to a number of databases, or where folks might have to find them, for servicing around.
I know that Water Department and the Water Sewer Advisory Board have been working on this and several other issues over the last year, really, looking at a lot of things to make sure that we can count for every drop of water that's out there. So thank you all for your work. Thank you to the Water Sewer Advisory Board. Thank you.
You're going to hear some sad news today on some of the stations. We weren't going to announce it in this meeting, but it has been already published by Channel 2, and we had a law supply from a gunshot blown to a three-year-old child this morning. So it's a day, unfortunately, it's already hit the media, and they get inquiry, but we're not releasing the information because there was an act that protects families that were passed very recently, so we'll understand. Come to the lecture if you don't mind.
We'll, we'll have to review the non-1 call to see if it qualifies, however, there was a act passed, a bill passed two years ago by Republican Mike Grably, and it exempts certain non-1 calls from public release, and that includes a call generally where they dead in a few minutes involved. But, but we'll have to review the call, we'll do, maybe under review now, but something we don't like to have to listen to. We, I got the call at 7:00 this morning, but I don't think we'll release it, but don't know yet.
Keep that family in our prayers. Also, you know, if any law supply is imported, we had two outstanding citizens die back-to-back. One is a matriarch of the Henderson family, Ms. Margaret Henderson, died at age 97. So it was a very, very long life. And Vernon, something this morning, Melvin Duckey passed away. Melvin was very involved in the fire department, very involved in all the business, he and his wife. And anything else you want to add about Melvin?
It's a big miss. Go ahead. And pray, keep his family in prayer.
That's the conclusion of regular business session. There's no executive session. We do have public participation on the non-agenda item, no monthly waiver, Americans with Disabilities Act, so if you'll come to the lecture, and you have five minutes.
Good morning. I am before you today to discuss the violations of Americans with Disabilities Act here and after ADA that you are unaware of, that you are in violation. I do not mean you specifically as an individual, but you as in the officials of the county that you are representing. I'm the Director of Compliance for Georgia's Equality and Access Advocates, and I'm also a certified ADA coordinator, and a certified ADA advocate. The violations that have been committed have been brought to my attention over a year ago, when I first attended to a calendar call in Judge Bieber's courtroom. My friend, Mr. Avosla, has invited me to speak on, in part, on his behalf. Americans with Disabilities Act binding this county as being a Title II entity, which is a state or local government. Therefore, as of this day, Tuesday, April 26, 2016, I am putting you on official notice that Paulding County is in violation of the federal ADA laws. The laws I see as being violated are 28 CFR 35.107A designation of responsible employee. For those of you that don't know, a public entity that employs 50 or more persons shall designate at least one employee to coordinate its efforts to comply with and carry out its responsibilities under this part, including any investigation of any complaint communicated to alleging it's not compliant with this part. This law is in violation because Mr. Austin, whom is the acting ADA coordinator, has been avoiding meeting with Mr. Avosla, and therefore is not carrying out his responsibility to investigate any complaint.
Did you say me?
I said you, yes.
Okay, I've never got the call, just a minute.
We have put in calls with Ms. Tibbetts. Mr. Avosla has, has written letters that have gone, gone unresponded to.
We have one call that happened.
Okay, he's prepared with, with that information, and this is information that has been filed into Judge Bieber's court, into the case. Avoid meeting with Mr. Avosla, and therefore is not carrying out his responsibility to investigate any complaint. Last week, when I came to request being added to today's agenda, I had also requested of Ms. Tibbetts to arrange a meeting with Mr. Austin. I have yet to hear from her. I have personally spoken with, with Ms. Sally Conway, who is the deputy chief of the Disability Rights Section of the United States Department of Justice, and she told me that the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, acting as the ADA coordinator, is a serious conflict of interest, and that the DOJ does not look too highly upon that. 28 CFR 35.107B, which is complaint procedure. A public entity that employs 50 or more persons shall adopt and publish grievance procedures providing for prompt and equitable resolution of complaints alleging any action that would be prohibited by this part. This law is in violation because what has been provided to us as being your published grievance procedure has two major flaws that I have advised Mr. Avosla not to condone by following the procedure or by filling it out and signing his name to. This document here that represents your grievance procedure, in my opinion, is discriminating unto itself. A public entity shall, oh, sorry, 28 CFR 35.105A self-evaluation. A public entity shall, within one year of the effective date of this part, evaluate its current services, policies, and practice, and the effects thereof that do not or may not meet with the requirements of this part. The fact that this document uses the word handicap a total of 24 times...
Actually, I don't want to interrupt you, but I don't think you have our current ordinance. It was changed last year.
This is what was given to me, when, when we requested it last year.
I don't know how long ago that that was, but we did change it last year, and it doesn't use that language anymore, and Ms. Tibbetts is actually the person who you did get complaints to, not Mr. Austin.
And, and you're on my calendar day at 2:00.
Okay, I, I did not know that.
It, it was...
Last week.
Last week.
Okay.
So this particular ordinance was changed at the end of last year, or I don't know, maybe, now it's early than that, maybe mid-part last year.
Okay, so it might have been right, right, right after we, we received this and started requesting.
It probably was.
Okay.
But continue on, that was your time, so continue on.
Thank you, thank you for the extra time. I've taken it upon myself to provide you with an edited copy of the grievance procedure that is utilized by the United States Department of Justice. This is the grievance procedure that the DOJ uses when they do a settlement agreement with other Title II entities that they find are in violations of the ADA. Other laws I find in violation are 28 CFR 35.130, general prohibitions against discrimination. So I want to know, what are you going to do about the fact that Mr. Austin, whom is also the acting ADA coordinator, has been committing federal violations by failure to do this job? There are other laws that need to be discussed that have also been violated, such as 28 CFR 35.160, general communications. These laws will not be discussed here today in this open forum, as they involve protected HIPAA information. Finally, but not least, another potential violation is 28 CFR 35.106 notice. So therefore, my next question is directly to Mr. Austin. When will you be meeting with Mr. Avosla and myself to discuss the specifics and the violations that have been committed by various individuals that work in this building and for this county? Specifically, will you be investigating this complaint, or continue to avoid and allow the discriminations to continue?
Well, I guess that was kind of...
Okay, we're on, and have been on for 2:00 tonight.
Great, thank you.
And if you could get an updated ordinance from Ms. Tibbetts, that would probably be helpful, because the one you're using isn't up to date, and we actually have that same grievance form that you're referring to.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. Like I said, last year, when I requested this, this is what, what we were given, and like I said, I, I advise Mr. Avosla not to, not to condone that by signing to it.
Thank you, I'll let you see it happening.
Okay, thank you.
And we give you this after the meeting.
Okay.
Can I hear a motion to the chair?
Motion to the chair, second.